I'd appreciate it if everyone would stand with us and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll then immediately after the Pledge of Allegiance have our invocation returned by Councilman Mike Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please balance with Mike. Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you for the blessings you've given us and how you've watched over us and how you've cared for us. As we go into this new year, I pray that you be with us as a council, be with us as employees of the city, as people who serve the people of this town, be with the people of this town. Father, I pray for the well-being of Bonner Springs because it's through Bonner that we receive our well-being. Be with us now as we go into this new year. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And the first item of business tonight is the oath of office for our incoming council members, and I'll turn this over to our city clerk, Amber McCollough.
I almost got all the new ones on one side.
Is that what you're gonna do? Get the balance?
That makes me look bad, Tom.
Yeah.
Tie, tie, button down.
Golf, golf, golf.
This way. They're normally crappies close.
This is true. Putting on airs.
I was gonna do this. It's Mendel's.
You look very nice. Overalls.
Do you have your right hand in the heat out of your face? Can I say your name, your solemn name?
I say my name, my solemn name.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas?
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the public official?
Faithfully discharge the duties of the public official.
The City of Bonner Springs, Kansas?
The City of Bonner Springs, Kansas.
So help me God. We all have a loyalty of the Constitution.
You assign your loyalty oath.
If you want to request that, Amber.
Is that a Freedom of Information Act document?
George is leaving. Bye, George. Coop's out.
Well, I'd like to congratulate all of our new city council people, and we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. The next agenda item is the opportunity for citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone that would like to stand and speak on issues concerning the City of Bonner Springs and address the city council, you're welcome to. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to address the city council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move right along to our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda includes the minutes of the December 18th city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and designation of the city depository. Anything to pull by the city, by the citizens? Clarification from the council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, we accept the consent agenda as second.
Moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Yes.
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 I think this is yours.
Are you sure you don't?
I did. I figured out what it was finally. It got passed to me. Rolling right along to agenda item number seven, a final PT 17106 for Canaan Center Second Phase staff.
Evening, Mayor, Don's office, city planner. This comes to you tonight, you know, for today's event. It is a four-lot mixed, high-density residential, portion of supplemental. The good news with this plan, we let you get a complete Canaan center. So if the project planners come in, they'll have a way out. The dedication is for you tonight, for both the private and the public. Mostly developer and the engineer here tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to be added? Other questions, concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. What else do I need to do?
Nope. Make a motion?
I make a motion.
To accept the dedication?
To accept the dedication. Of easements and right-of-way as shown on the final plaque.
Very good.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here on my left. No?
Just the one comment is I'm glad we're finally gonna move on this project and see some developments up there.
Yes.
Sir? Have any questions or concerns, comments? I wanted to compliment, I like the larger size included. Soon it's gonna be electronic, yeah.
There's a citizen concern.
Oh, yes.
You're not feeding me fast enough.
I'm not used to that. Seeing none, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Congratulations. Thank you. And yeah, we're... Yep, continued welcome to Bonner Springs. Yeah, it's a nice place. That area will benefit with this. Moving along to item number eight, the zoning ordinance amendment via ZP 127, Open Storage, Section 7, Article 22, supplemental supplementary district regulations. Was that right? Twenty-two?
Yes. That is correct. The... This actually predates, only one fact, CarMax, I go 1987. The issue arose a couple of years ago, well recently, when Kurt was... Actually lost the case because of the found this regulation that really was more pervasive in the district. What it was doing was granting salvage operations, or cooperations, as we know. The thought back years ago was that it was gonna help with that. The accident of those salvagers for short term, less than nine days. The current code of ordinances, which is also the staff of the outside storage, is current. Therefore, this has been tonight, the planning, the documentation, the repeal of the storage section seven, renumbering the remaining sections.
Thank you very much. Anything to... Questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, move along to... We're gonna have... We'll make a motion, get a motion on the floor, then we'll have our time. So that's the very next thing I'm gonna ask for is a motion concerning this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the ordinance to repeal section seven, open storage under Article 24. I'm sorry, it's 22, supplementary district regulations and renumber the remaining sections.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here on this side. Mr. Shannon? Okay.
Jordan Mackey. Yes, I have a couple of concerns that I was worried about, or I feel that it kind of singles out my ward and a lot of the contractors that I know and like tradesmen in Bonner. I would like to do a little bit more research on it or see if there's some style of rewrite that we could do for it rather than entirely nixing the grace period. There's a... It was stated in here that there was an 11-day grace period, and it worried me that Mr. Sloan had mentioned that it could be used for anything, or I'm not quoting him exactly, but somebody had asked a question and whenever this was brought up and talked to by one of the citizens, and he was stating that it could be used on any lot regardless of zoning, whether it be... Or inference, whether it be commercial, residential, or anything. And I worry about the Pandora's Box side of it, that it can be used as a tit-for-tat motion or a neighbor's argument thing, as I had previously had, happened to me last year. I had somebody turn me in over 31, 31 days out of 31 days in a month for a property that I had purchased. She was jealous of her, upset that I had purchased the property, and turned me in every single day for the entire month to try and get me cited for something because we were trying to rehab the property, and she was upset that I had purchased it. She didn't like the price. And I worry that entirely nixing the full grace period could allow that to happen more And I'd like to do either table it for right now, to do further research on it since I wasn't on council or present whenever it was initially brought up, if possible. That's my full comments.
Okay. Can you make a motion with the motion already on there before you decide on that?
That's what I was kinda worried about.
This motion would have to fail first, and then you'd be able to make that motion to table it or send it back or whatever you wanted.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's... I guess that's my biggest concern is the aspect that once it's pushed through, I know it would be much more difficult to try and get a grace period enacted for contractors or anybody, because I know a great majority of the houses in my ward are either being worked on by myself and a partner, or as well as several other contractors have started coming into Bonner. And if we have, if we entirely nix, because part of the ordinance that's being removed is the storage of construction or construction-related materials, I worry that that opens it up to essentially anything, like anybody could turn in, anybody trying to work on a property, as well as it had minor things on it like bike storage, garden supply storage, and like several other things that it seems like it could be a very, very quickly become a tit-for-tat neighbor dispute-style thing that they could use against each other.
So this is in the residential zone?
Now, this is... There's a misunderstanding here, like the repeal is within the supplemental district of open storage. The open storage is stored salvage, scrap metal, or... In the case of a contractor rehabbing a house, you would have that stuff. In some of the columns, we're not gonna do that. The outside storage, which is under the code of ordinance, is 10 to 12 days. It's not made of touch. Those things do apply to all zoning districts, and that is not being reviewed. We do use common sense as part of this, our indication, right? The issue of the thing is in the outside storage itself, remaining the open storage, open storage, deals in our, my opinion, professional opinion, is more to the scrap metal, salvage than not a contract. However, contractors in residential areas, even with occupation license, are not permitted to store material on the property that's not being used on the property. That's the definition. So that's it. If you're rehabbing a house and you've got material to rehab the house, nobody's gonna be, even if the neighbors come to the place.
But if you have, if you're a contractor and you live in a house in a... anywhere in Bonner Springs, and you store all of your construction material on your yard, this would prohibit that.
Correct. And that's the intent, the intent of residential, favorite, commercial, no other uses of these things.
And that's, that's not allowed now already. It's just this open storage allows some salvage for eight days, and that was interpreted as being too permissive to not allow that open storage in other districts.
Very good. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
With that, or in line with that, my worries was that I know several contractors who work with trees, concrete, and essentially anything where you would have larger equipment. If... I know I've had several contractors that I've known that have had problems with it before getting turned in. If they bring, say, a concrete mixer home, my interpretation of this is that they wouldn't be able to do that. If they had it stored in their backyard or something, and with as small as my ward is, I know at least five different contractors that live near where I'm at, and I worry about them getting attacked for this or having repercussions and not being able to do anything against it.
But that's not permitted now.
Are they... With it... What is this storage part of the thing? Could you have something on the property for 11 days and then you have to remove it?
No. The issue is this. The issue is residential pursuit is residential property.
Correct.
You're talking about contractors using residential property to store material not being used outside.
Correct.
You cannot do it in the outside storage current. It has nothing to do with open. Contractors cannot put material not being used outside of residential property. You can't operate a business out of property.
Correct.
You have the sinks and the tubs and everything you gotta take... You live in 10, you gotta take it down, load it 330. You gotta be... You can have it on 330 while you're working it, but you can't...
Okay, so if you're building a wall or retaining wall in your front yard and you're not a contractor?
As long as the material and the equipment is being used, is being used on site, then nobody's gonna cite you. If you're painting the material in construction, putting on property, not being used outside, it has nothing to do with the open storage. They're gonna have it in purpose. Intend a zone, violate a zone if you're doing some usage of it.
Okay. I don't really have much else to say. As I said, I didn't, wasn't aware of it yet, so I haven't been able to do much research on it. And I know I haven't been able to talk to Sloan about it. So I would like to be able to table it if possible so I could talk to other people about it, but I know that has to fail first. And I'm not against it. I understand the pretense of it and the purpose, but as I mentioned, I just worry about the Pandora's Box side, that once it's done, it's done. You can't... It's a lot harder to get something added in or grace period or something like that, and that's what I worry about because I am personally a contractor, and I've worried about this before because I've had it come up, and it's been used against me on several properties. As he said, I know that it was helpful, but I also know who to talk to and things like that, and I worry about somebody coming in out of town, because in the past three years, I've had my construction trailer towed, I've had one of my personal vehicles towed earlier this year, and I've lost, or I've had more things impounded or taken because of city stuff, because they didn't know who to contact or whatever. I know that was my own personal doing, but I worry about the overreach side of it and people that don't have as many contacts as I do, not being able to fight against this or being able to even understand what's going on. So that's... My full thoughts on it is if we can do some more research, I'm not against it. I just worry about the wording of it.
Very good. Sir? No questions.
Two quick questions. How does this apply to people with livestock in the city?
Livestock is permitted only in agricultural zones.
So we have people in town that have chickens?
Chickens are permitted under whatever... Out of control.
Right. Accepting that they're permitted if there are fence posts or hedge stuff, that needs to be stored inside a building?
Yeah, I have animals I can't...
Okay. Excellent.
Any agriculture, it's permitted in agriculture.
So it falls under a different ordinance?
Chickens are agricultural.
No, I haven't seen it. And this is... The enforcement of this is not... Farver driving around looking for infractions, this is only obvious or brought to the attention or...
It's brought to the attention, again, we use common sense. If they're rehabbing a house, you know...
Right.
Then we call it back, right? And there's more things not gonna be used outside that's inappropriate under the current regulation. This is just a smack in the face of a property that's gonna be treated in a short time.
This is only specifically residential zoning?
No, that's... You mentioned somebody on the commentary.
Well, the section is being removed on the applies to residential in section seven.
If you go to the section two, it's locked.
Got it? That's all property zoning?
Right.
That already exists?
This particular item, this is our zoning ordinance, section seven, sort of property control. You say something?
Got it. Okay. So in one place we're saying it's not permitted, in another place we were saying they had nine days.
Correct.
Thank you. Now I am currently on the right page. Thank you.
You've got... You can't store unless you're doing work on that particular house, but you can store it at your place, even though, okay, that's what I...
Not outside.
I just...
Put it in the garage and shut the door.
No questions. They clarified that. Thank you.
Sir?
I appreciate all the input from Councilman Member Mackey as well as from Mr. Sloan. I mean, it really comes down to is that everybody who lives in a residential area has an expectation that it is a residential area, and if all of a sudden you've started introducing commercial into a residential area that's not zoned for it, then those people, their rights are somewhat being violated by the fact that you're running a commercial business out of a residential property. So I think in this particular instance, we have the regulation that qualifies it, that there's no reason for that section seven to exist.
Yeah, just one little bit of clarification. Somebody that is doing salvage or has an operable motor vehicle, they've got nine days to get rid of it, is that right? Or no days? The whole intent of this is because, as Sean mentioned, the property maintenance code gave it a place, it was part of, as he said, the intent is not to have salvage vehicles in residential, and it's like, hey, we're getting rid of it. The planning commission, we have absolutely recommends a window period, so we have that eight or nine days. My only concern there was that if they're given nine days, for the nine days, we have a different pile of scrap there than we started with, because that gets another nine days.
That's what they're taking out.
That's why I'm saying that this changing ordinance, so this nine-day window, perhaps there's a possibility, as the state of the country says, any of these items, if they're outside of storage, they're not just residential. It's, yeah, timeframe goes away.
If it's there for two weeks, you start moving the house.
No other questions? Please.
Mr. Who was it? Mr. Stevens brought up the comment that it was about the residential side of the expectations of residential, and the reason, one of the reasons why I brought it up is because the expectations of coming to Bonner versus living in Johnson County, or say, living in an HOA. If you moved into an HOA, you're well aware of what the expectations are, and you know that you are moving into a board where it has specific expectations. But what I have heard from a lot of people that move into Bonner, and I know a lot of the contractors that move into Bonner, is that it is more lenient, that it is more blue-collar neighborhood, and that's why I specifically mentioned my ward, Ward One, like the downtown area of Bonner. They don't have 200,000-plus to go purchase a home in, say, Lee Valley, or to purchase a home in one of the other wards where you can get an acre, two acres of land, and of course, I would presume there's gonna be fence posts, or there's gonna be lumber or concrete materials or things to store on that acreage, and you can do that, and nobody's gonna say anything because it's like not my, you don't pick on me, I won't pick on you type thing. And the reason I bring that up is because I used to live in Ward Three, and almost every single person on my entire street, we all did the same thing. We were all blue collar. Each one of us had, we just had an understanding, it was our expectations that we knew, like we all knew as neighbors, and we didn't mind. One of the gentlemen worked on cars, and nobody cared. He worked on race cars. Another gentleman worked on restoration of historic vehicles. I would have construction materials, or I'd build things on site and then take them off, things like that, and it allowed us to be more of a community, but we had some sort of issue where one of the city officials had to come in, and all of us started getting cited because we had an understanding, as Mr. Stevens had mentioned, we knew what our expectations were, but then the city came in and we knew, as Mr. Sloan had mentioned, we knew what the city standards were, but as a neighborhood, we had different standards, and we were able to act on that behalf as like our own neighborhood. But with something like this, I worry that it takes away those rights of a neighborhood to be able to do that type of thing. It turns all of Bonner into one giant HOA, and the city can just jump down somebody's sort of, if it's apparent to do so. And I had the same sort of issue when I lived in Waldo. We all had, as a neighborhood, we had no HOA, but we had understandings as neighbors to be able to do things, whatever we were doing, and somebody could, say, build a chicken coop, or somebody could have arts and crafts, or we knew a lady on the street that she was just the garden lady, and it wasn't city ordinance, or it went against it, but she had beautiful plants and everything in the, in her yard and all of that, and it worries me that it takes away the small-town aspect and turns it into like the juggernaut aspect of Johnson County, or kind of pushes out the little guy, like the little, the blue-collar person can't come in and fight or have anything to say once these types of ordinances are starting to be pushed into play. And yes, as I said, I'm not against it. I understand it. I just worry about the wording of it, and that it's just too vague and easily attacked for, as I said, blue-collar people or people within my ward, contractors and guys that I work with. Yes, I know that what the city standards are, but if a neighborhood agrees that, hey, Jimbo Joe has construction materials on his property and he owns an eighth of an acre and nobody cares, then I don't see a problem with it, and I don't understand why the city should be able to come in and make up a problem where there isn't one, if there's no need to make a...
At the same time, we can't allow neighborhoods to decide what rules to follow and what laws to follow.
Of course.
Very good. Any other question? I'm gonna...
I'd like to make one last comment, though, in regards to...
Okay.
One of the things the government is supposed to do is to protect the rights of the minority, the smaller group, and what you're saying is basically is that a larger group can dictate what occurs in a neighborhood, and what happens to that one or two individuals who says, I'm against nine or 10 other households, his only right, her only right would be to utilize the city ordinances. So that is one of the reasons why those ordinances exist, so that way a larger majority group can't dictate to a smaller group.
Well, I... Thank you. And I agree, it's a very, very thin line that we have to negotiate as council people. And the zoning ordinances primarily have a wealth of information, and they were, they're designed to protect all of us.
Correct.
And I hear your desire to have more flexibility in neighborhoods... And I hear your desire to have more flexibility in neighborhoods, and as you get more into the different aspects, you'll see how easy that is to get away from the rules and the desired effect. None of the zoning ordinances try to be, usurp any power that anybody has to enjoy their own rights and freedoms. The main thing is we're trying to protect everybody. So I hear what you're saying, and I've, at one time, had very similar opinions or desires, but when you look at the bigger picture, it's very difficult to ensure that ability. So my suggestion is, if these are important concerns to, not just to you, Jordan, not just to you as a city councilman, but also to your neighborhood, that those are the times that you would want to elicit that ground swell of community support, to move away from current, modern zoning ordinances to some type of other options. Do you see what I'm saying? Because with that Pandora's box, many things can happen. So you allow one guy to stack a few two-by-fours until he throws them back in his truck, the next guy has a water heater, well, it's a good water heater, I'm going to hook it back up, but that water heater then breeds, you know, a worst tub and stack of shingles and everything.
The property values.
And property values, and the little old lady that won't speak up to her neighbors, you know, has difficulty with it because she has to drive by it every day. So it's a thin line that we have to travel. And so I found a lot of value in the zoning ordinances, and what is allowed and what isn't. Concentrating on what is allowed gave me the opportunity to have my lawn chairs out back. I can store them out back, my lawn equipment, there you go. Same way with my lawnmower. You can put that in the backyard. Those kind of things give you that, those rights.
Well, yeah, with that, I was just, what I was bringing up with it is it's going from something to nothing.
Except that they're contradictory. Both of these already exist within the codes, but they contradict each other.
But this was a former code that was done in, what, 1987?
But they both are currently on the books as enforceable.
I understand that, that's why...
All we're doing tonight is repealing the open storage Section 7 piece that contradicts the outside storage piece. We're not trying, we're not talking about the open storage.
Removing the potential for a grace period and creating like a zero sum game, whereas the 1987 ordinance was created by the city, and it wasn't just the codes that were like blanketly accepted.
But they're both on the books now. The 11410, the 11410 exists with no grace period.
Correct. And that's the one that we're wanting to adopt, right?
No, it's already there. It's already there.
We're only repealing...
All we're doing is taking away Section 7 open storage.
So we're only repealing the one with a grace period then?
Right.
And that's what I'm stipulating is my worry is that we're removing the aspect of any grace period, as Mr. Reeves brought up, if somebody has a car that's out of service or something, instead of giving them, say, three or four days, we're giving them no days whatsoever.
No. It'd be salvage car is what they address, the salvage vehicle, not a car that has a flat tire, not a car that happens to need a battery. Those are two different things.
I read it as inoperable vehicles. Is it specifically salvage vehicles?
That was my interpretation, isn't that...
I thought it was just inoperable vehicles.
Well, that's what's being... The open storage, we primarily salvage items that are in the open storage. But it's on the books currently, it's the second page, but all of these items are still permitted for outside storage. They have, I'm asking you to say, if someone's a homeowner, I mean, a shop, for example, but you're still able to store outside, all of those items is different page, you have some outdoor lawnmowers, furniture, lawnmowers, lawn chairs, firewood, a stack of trash containers that are good prepared, so. This is kind of trying to separate the, you know, but has to be primarily items that are more isolation, uh, like the, like the lawn calls, I mean, if they're in the use cases, because it says storage, items that aren't used every day. We still have on the books allows residents to keep items stored outside as long as they're in the open storage.
So it seems like inoperable vehicles, so tomorrow, there was a vehicle sitting, even if it was licensed and all of that, we could cite them, and they'd be cited.
If you've got a car that's got a flat tire or something like that, you can, um, if they're flat tires, you sit there, you hear, two or five...
And if it isn't licensed, or...
Of course. Well, I understand that, if it's not licensed or something like that.
If you've got a section, you know, it's supposed to be licensed or not licensed, or registered, it's a thing.
The hood's up for six months. The hood's up for six months.
So is there any grace period for that whatsoever before it's taken or took?
As soon as you've got a situation where the nuisance is being created, the city's best to buy ordinances to take care of it.
So currently, as it stands, though, I know it's a, it's a double contradiction, or like a catch-22, but there is a grace period currently. Even though the other ordinance contradicts it, there's still a grace period of nine days, right?
There's a grace period to the extent that it's covered with open storage, scrap, field, outdoor, and there's also goods and furniture and so on, and that's strictly residential areas inside of the area.
One of the citizens that asked the question about that, though, it worried me that Mr. Sloan stated that it could be used in any zoning, anywhere.
And let me clarify, the issue came up because he was misreading, the planning commissioner was misreading, which was to draw all of the... He was referencing that 11410 outside storage, not open storage. Outside storage, this is where that's where it came. To be fair, this is also very under public hearings, this is very modest, the planning officials, so I'm a common, we just, so that's the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, so, uh, far as, uh, uh, this is, uh, this is, uh, 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 uh.
Well, that was my worry, is that I wasn't on council before that, so that's why I'm stipulating.
Yeah, we haven't seen this before either. This is all new to all of us.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. So, yeah, I'm not against it, I would just like to see if we could possibly do more research on it, because, I mean, as quite a few people have brought up different points, rather than just mixing it right away to push it out, it would be great if we could do some more research on it or talk about it, but I know that a motion's already been passed, so I would ask that you guys say no for this, just so that we can talk about it, or elaborate on it to some degree. That's my two cents.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Shannon? I didn't know if you had anything else. Not seeing nothing else.
Vote please, we beat the dead horse, I understand.
Steven? Yes.
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 Absolutely not. No.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes. On to item number nine. This is Lions Park Trail Project final payment. Staff?
Hey, Mayor, Mr. Dawson, here's tonight, what we have for you is a change order as well as a final payment to Lions Park Trail Project. Just a reminder that it's a trail day, so, uh, obviously, that's all contract, basically extended out by Lions Park Trail. For you, a change order, change order number three, two other change orders, where is your number? Again, this will also be a final payment, uh, a lot of money, a lot of dollars, a lot of that, that...
Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns from the citizens on the trail part? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept change order number three and approve final payment to Little Joe's asphalt of the amount of $25,316.22 for the Lions Park Trail project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here.
I'm just curious, were they able to mediate all of the problems with the, there were some soft spots and all of that?
Yes.
Is that part of one of these change orders? I saw that.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 On to item 10, the city manager's report.
Thank you. The interest is, uh, uh, just a quick reminder that Monday, next Monday, it's an Oxy, it's close operation, so Oxy, uh, take the park. Wednesday, this group made an announcement about, uh, the housing, it's supposed to pay the, uh, 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 today, it's not double, it's going out, it's a large space as well, and then also, Dr. Brady, your test, maybe you can see his house, uh, 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 uh,
Very good, and we'll move on to city council items, we'll start down here.
Sir?
It was just nice to see in the business updates that somebody is progressively working towards keeping the Dollar General in town. That's it.
Do you want to shoot all individual council members before the next meeting, or are you just doing groups?
Take a picture, shoot means something else.
Thanks, Mark, would you like to take pictures? Everybody? Okay.
That's not just semantics.
I don't live in that world yet, sorry. Can we please add city council meetings to the calendar on the website?
None.
Along with the next Monday, I'm going to ask to provide a reminder about Martin Luther King, it's, I guess, called Memorial Celebration, at the First Christian Church on Monday, the 15th, at 1:00 PM. And after that, there will be a spaghetti supper that is served, and tickets can be bought at that service. And a lot of the high school, the school kids have really worked hard and are going to participate in this, so they'll have, they'll be providing honor and inspiring program for...
Where did you say that was taking place at?
At the First Christian Church, 1300, uh, 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM, and dinner immediately to follow, or does it have a later start time?
Uh, no, I think it's immediately to follow, and tickets can be bought at the beginning or end of the service. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey? Well, thank you very much, and I was going to make mention of that same Martin Luther King Day celebration. I'll be bringing, Mayor McTaggart and I will be bringing proclamations, so I look forward to being at that service again this year. And little business updates, those, those, sorry to see one store leave, but it sounds as if as soon as one leaves, another one opens right up. So the interest in downtown Bonner Springs continues to grow, those specialty retail merchants are a great group, and it's great to see that there's such interest, as well as the continued support of the Dollar General for this whole end of Bonner Springs, it's a big asset. Since our last meeting, I had an opportunity to speak with other local mayors, and there's been a little bit of turnover across the Wyandotte and Johnson County area, and it's nice to see the people that are, the new people interested in local government, and that's so important, and I, again, congratulate those newly elected, and thank all those that have, other council members for putting in the time that you do. There was a terrible accident today on 7th Highway that caused the 7th Highway to be closed for an extended period of time. Our condolences go out to the family, it was a fatality wreck. I don't know that the individual's been identified yet, and I don't know if they're from Bonner Springs or not, but we've enjoyed quite a mild winter so far, but when we are impacted with difficult weather, traveling weather, we need to remind ourselves, to give ourselves plenty of time. Black ice, although we talk about it a lot, sneaks up on everyone, so please encourage all of our families and friends to be careful. I don't know if that was the cause or not, but it certainly, certainly couldn't have done anything but add to the severity of the situation. Also, this is the season of water main breaks. If you happen to see a water main break, please notify the city as soon as you are aware of it.
Mobile app is great for that?
Yes. And it's a challenging time, not only for the water pipes, but for the men and women who fix those water pipes, and so give them a wide berth and make sure you're very careful in those areas, too. We'll be monitoring all those breaks and repairs, and hopefully getting final, complete hard surface on top of them as soon as we can. We're working towards decreasing the amount of time those areas are temporarily patched. Unless anyone else has any questions or concerns for me? Yes? So?
Rupert's in it?
Right, where the entrance sign is, if you're coming across 7th Highway.
Oh, across the south of 32, yeah.
Oh.
I was thinking up north, that's all.
Oh, that's great.
You should probably stop, get on Dixon's with it, though.
Oh, that's super. That's always been a prime spot, you know, exactly to advertise Bonner Springs, so coming into Bonner Springs, it's the one that had the eyeglasses on it, I bet. Also, I continue to get lots of compliments on our digital sign, Metropolitan, the little bit of information that it provides is oftentimes those blurbs that get missed in all the other media outlets that we support, so continue to use the app or the website or the, all the things that we do, Facebook and all that. And thank you for the Facebook coverage over the holiday with the city hall closures...